A couple slips for requests to speak, but are these for something not on the agenda? Or what's on the agenda, Mr. Wass?
I would like to address my remarks about the standalone elections.
Okay. And Patricia Hiles, probably the same thing. Okay, fine, thanks. No, that's fine. I just didn't know it was a public comment or whatever. Okay, so, we have one thing on our agenda, which is standalone elections. Mr. Lopez.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, good afternoon. Today, we plan to provide you with an overview and the background on the election costs in other communities as they pertain to elections. We also want to present to you the status of the city's plans to conduct their own standalone elections. We hope to provide you with information of a standalone election, specifically a vote-by-mail election versus a traditional poll election. We also are going to hear from an election official who has been involved and is involved in conducting a standalone election, vote-by-mail election, and has also experience with poll elections. And lastly, really, the objective of this meeting is to get some feedback from you and direction on the next steps. We have done a lot of work to prepare for the, for an election, and we need some direction from the council as to where we need to go next. Let me give you a quick overview of the schedule. We have two hours set aside for this discussion. It's my, I anticipate that it's not going to be taking that long for a variety of reasons, and namely because I've seen that the council members are nodding their heads. So that's clue number one. But I'll give you generally what we had intended on doing today and how we are going to be modifying it a bit. First of all, the first part will consist of the background and the status of the city's plans to conduct their own election. We want to go with you, we want to go over what has brought us to this point, what plans the city staff has implemented to conduct an election, and also to cover the type of support, consultant support, that the city will need to carry out this effort. Part two will cover the election infrastructure and the elections consultants. Specifically, we're looking at two companies. One is Martin &amp; Chapman, company involved in the election business, and another one, and then we're also looking to retain the services of a retired city clerk that provides consultant services. Her name is Donna Grindi. Now, we had hoped that both of them would be here today, and they will not be here today. Martin &amp; Chapman, we had indication during the planning stages that they may not be able to make it, and that they're not here today. So, I will be Martin &amp; Chapman, and I will cover their presentation. We also had intended of having Donna Grindi here today. Unfortunately, she developed pneumonia, so she's not here with us. However, Cindy Rodriguez will be Donna, and she will be providing that information. With both of us making that portion of the presentation, I think we're going to go rather quickly with that piece. Part three is what I'm calling the experience in the trenches. And we're fortunate to have Margarita Campos from the city of Burbank, who has expertise in standalone elections, traditional poll elections, and vote-by-mail elections. So, we're very fortunate to have her specialist, and she is currently working in an election and a primary scheduled sometime in February. So, she's taken the time to be here with us, and we really appreciate your presence today. And part four is really the focus of the program. What are the next steps? Where does council want to go? What sort of direction will staff take back in anticipation of finalizing the recommendation that we intend to take to the city council, assuming you make a decision today, sometime in February, as soon as possible, so that we can make some decisions? You see these charts all around me. There's eight different charts, and these charts really represent all of the functions that are necessary to do an election. So you can see they're pretty detailed. We're not going to go over all of these charts, but this is just to give you an idea of the steps that are involved in conducting an election. What I would propose is that if we could go and complete parts one through three, I think it would be best for all of us, because the presentations build on one another, section one, section two, and section three. And towards the, and at the end, we'll be able to answer the questions that have not been answered in the course of the presentation. So if we could hold the questions until we get to part four, that would be appreciated. If something is not clear, please stop us at any time, and we'll be glad to clarify what we're doing. Let me start with the background. The county has conducted consolidated elections for the city of Santa Barbara for as long as, I guess, most of the people in this room can remember. I know we've gone back 27 years and looked at the record, and then we stopped looking any further back, but, you know, for our purposes, at least 27 years, this has been transpiring. However, the city is becoming the only jurisdiction that is holding odd-year elections. The Montecristo Fire District, the Ambacaradero Special District, has since moved to special elections. The Goleta Sanitary District also has an odd-year election. So one could say, well, you know, if they're here, then that's two jurisdictions, that makes it a consolidated election. Is it possible that the county could hold an election? And the answer is yes. However, we're not sure that there will be three candidates running for the Goleta Sanitary District, and they may not be required to have an election. Consequently, we can't just afford to wait and see what happens. We need to plan, we need to be ready to conduct an election as necessary. The county has the option to not do an election if we are, we're the only given town, if we're the only city, the only municipalities, we're going to, unit of government that's conducting an election. The county does not have to conduct an election, and that has been challenging for us. One of the things that we've looked at is that the city has experienced a substantial increase in election costs, essentially doubling beginning 2001. In 2001, the election costs were at $167,000. For the 2003 election, the cost increased to $307,000. And for the 2007 election, costs are projected to be somewhere between $550,000 to $650,000. As you can see, those are quite dramatic increases. In 2004 and in 2006, we did a list survey, and list surveys that we send a notice after the, we send a notice to the other city clerks in the state of California, and we ask them the question, what does it cost to run your elections? How much are you paying? And we started looking and got some of the information, and we've given you some of the numbers for the 2003 election, and they principally deal with municipalities that are comparable to us, that have conducted the elections under comparable circumstances. And the numbers are quite interesting. Cupertino, about 26,000 registered voters, 60,000. Urieta, 30,000 registered voters, $65,000. Rancho Palos Verdes, 26,000 registered voters, $73,000. Redwood City, you can see the numbers. Closer to home, Ventura, the city of Ventura, San Buenaventura. Ventura County is charging $47,000 for 58,000 registered voters. For the city of Santa Barbara, the county gave us a bill of $307,000. I think there's quite a difference with those numbers. We also contacted the county of Ventura to inquire as to what they were projecting to charge the city of San Buenaventura in 2007. Again, pretty startling differences. Ventura with about 60,000 voters, the numbers are changing because they have a different number of registered voters, so it's not that we weren't paying attention to, we're updating the information. About $150,000, same situation as us in 2007. Difference, somewhere between $550,000 to $650,000 is what Santa Barbara County is estimating would cost the city of Santa Barbara to do an election. You know, we're in a position where we prefer not to run our own election, and it's not by choice that we are in this situation, it's by necessity. The fact that the costs are extremely high, and we need to do something about it, and that's the option, the city needs to take a look at the elections. Let's take a look at what the options are that we're considering that we have put on the table at this point. One is we could contract with Santa Barbara County and pay the $550,000 to $650,000. Or, we can conduct our own elections, estimate it at $300,000, it's likely to come in below $300,000, but we're using that, we are using that number for planning purposes. And be that as it may, it's a savings of between a quarter of a million dollars to $300,000. That's a substantial savings to the taxpayers. And lastly, is one option that we're not discussing extensively in our presentation today, but is nevertheless an option for the city to consider, and that's to conduct an election this year and consider a charter amendment to shift the election to an even year. That is one of the policy questions that needs to be addressed at some point if we decide to go into a different direction, okay? At this time, what I would like to do is to introduce Cindy Rodriguez, and she's our city clerk, and she's going to go over this work plan that I alluded to earlier. And the work plan really is the who, what, when, where, why, and how process to conduct the election. This format includes the task, the deadline, and the person and agency responsible for doing what needs to be done to do our own election, so I'm going to ask Cindy to make the presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As our admin services director stated, the charts that are around the room is actually our work plan that we've prepared to conduct the standalone election. And the work plan does outline both, does provide for both the vote-by-mail plan and also a traditional poll election. I would like to briefly go over some of the sections in the work plan and just to kind of give you an idea of the duties that are related to holding a standalone election. Our first section, there are 23 categories that we've, one hadn't, we've basically listed the major categories related to the standalone election process, and there are 23. The first one being the pre-election duties. Some of the duties are, receive the proposals from the elections consultants, which we have received. Line item 10 is conduct a field visit with the city of Burbank to review their vote-by-mail election process. Another major category that I'd like to point out is the resolutions. The work plan just calls out every, every resolution that would need to, need to be processed related to a vote-by-mail and a poll election. If we go to line item 91, which is the precinct workers, this section relates, of course, to a poll election, and under that category, all the duties that are assigned related to that process. In this scenario for a poll election, it would require approximately 20 precincts in our city. That would require the hiring of 80 poll workers, and it would also require 35 additional city staff members to assist with the election process. That would be staff members that would be able to help us with the necessary boards that are related to the, to the poll election. Line item 193 relates to the designated drop-off centers, and that relates to a vote-by-mail election. And line item 194 relates to determining the number of drop-off centers, and we have determined for, in our work plan, it accounts for four designated drop-off centers. Those designated centers would have poll workers actually working at those centers, and that would require 16 poll workers versus the 80 in a, in a poll election. We have added to the work plan, we've mimicked a lot of what the city of Burbank has done because they happen to be the leader in California in the vote-by-mail process, so. So what we're planning on doing is having, at each of the drop-off centers, we'll have those centers open the Saturday prior to the election, which is Saturday, November 3rd, from 10:00 to 2:00, and then also Election Day from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then, in addition, City Hall will be open during, open daily from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. And in addition, City Hall will be open on the Saturday prior to the election, which is November 3rd, and also Election Day, November 6th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Going to the Election Day activities, some of the other duties related to that day pertain to designating and designing a central polling, or central counting center for election night. And the work plan just showed that we have already indicated that would be our council chamber for that evening. Also, determining the necessary computer equipment related, we have been meeting with our information systems staff, and we've, we've been discussing that issue with them as well, so they're up to speed in that regard. And then line item 261, which is a nice category for us, and that's post-election duties. And it will just list the items that we will be doing under that category, preparing thank-you letters for all the workers, and then filing campaign statements for those candidates that are successful at the election. The work plan, as I indicated, is designed for both a vote-by-mail and a poll election. So once the determination is made in which direction we'll be going, we'll go ahead and separate that out, we'll go ahead and convert the work plan to a monthly plan, and we'll go ahead and add a status column, and we'll go ahead and designate who's going to do which duties, and we'll be able to follow it much easier that way. In preparation for our standalone election, staff has also attended numerous training sessions related to the standalone election process. And we do have two upcoming field visits scheduled to attend the city of Burbank's election. Their February 27th election this year, which is their primary election, and then their general election, which is scheduled for April 10th, 2007. So staff is planning on attending that, their election process to go ahead and view their vote-by-mail process. We have also been in communication with Martin &amp; Chapman. As our admin services director mentioned, they are the consultants that provide the infrastructure for the standalone election process. In addition, we have been communicating with Donna Grindi, who is a retired city clerk, and she is also consultant that is, has provided services to other cities related to the standalone election process. Throughout the entire standalone election process, the city clerk's office staff plans on following closely with the consultants, and will oversee the entire elections process.
So now you're going to hear from Martin &amp; Chapman. Martin &amp; Chapman is a company that was established in 1956, and they provide election supplies, services, and consultants to over 400 cities in the states of California and Nevada. You know, there's, there's no way we can conduct an election without that level of support. They have the equipment, they have the experience, they have the know-how, I mean, they've done it. So we need that support to be able to do an election. If we contract with Martin &amp; Chapman, what sort of infrastructure would we expect them to provide to us? Let me give you a quick overview. One, they would provide us with a calendar of election events, setting out the dates and requirements of the election code. And you will see here, this, that's the chart itself, and many, I'm sure you're familiar with that, but it begins from day one backwards and from Election Day to, from the beginning to Election Day, so all the deadlines are included here. And we would take us, this calendar would take us to the November 6th election this year. Secondly, they would provide suggestive forms of resolutions and notices for the election, the paperwork that has to be prepared, so they would work with us on that. They would help us provide the necessary election equipment to conduct the election, that is, the polling booths and the ballot counters and all the equipment that's necessary for that phase of the election. They provide the necessary ballot supplies and instructions for voting in the precinct and for absentee voting. They would typeset and print the bilingual English and Spanish ballot using the OptaMark voting system. This is an example of the information. They would typeset and print the voter's pamphlet with candidate's statements and measures, if we have any measures, they would add those also, and the instructions for voting in English and Spanish. Go back one. You can see we already have our pamphlet ready, it says city of Santa Barbara, November 6th. The only thing we don't have is, one, the candidates, and, two, the election results. Otherwise, we're ready. Seven, they will mail the pamphlets and the ballots, ballots, and arrange for delivery to our post office. They will handle that entire process. That's why they would be essential in our efforts. They would provide the city clerk's office with a PC-based mail ballot tracking program where returned ballots can be scanned daily and produce reports that indicate who has and who has not returned their ballots. That's essential information during a campaign. Nine, they would have several qualified persons available by telephone at all times to assist us. These are folks that have been involved in elections for years, that's their expertise. They would be available at, at a moment's notice to provide assistance. And lastly, they would count the ballots at City Hall or at another designated location. We're planning to count the ballots, probably in Room 15, hold the council chambers open, and, you know, show the machines operating, and it's kind of exciting, you know, at the same time when we talk about the election process. It's unfortunate that it costs so much to do so, but, for the county to do it, but the good news is that I think it's a, it's an exciting experience. And each ballot counter card reader will count about 600 ballots per minute, so we hope that Cindy can give you the election results by 10:00 p.m. Guaranteed, Cindy? So Cindy says that she will do that, so. Moving right along, as you can see, we're moving rather quickly. I wanted to go through this presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Cindy. She's going to speak about the services that would be provided by Donna Grindi, and she'll give you some background also of Donna.
In Donna's absence, I'll go ahead and go over the day-to-day duties that she will be providing for us. Basically, the duties that I'll be going over, they're already depicted in the work plan that we prepared, but these are the duties that she will definitely be overseeing and assisting the city clerk's office with. Next slide. Elections, resolutions, and notices. The city clerk's office will be preparing and reviewing the resolutions. Donna will provide some, some guidance in that regard, but we are familiar with preparing them. A lot of the functions that I'm going to be going, the next few slides, the city clerk's office will go ahead and handle those, so we've actually got a cost reduction in our, in our agreement with her. So, next slide. Candidate nomination preparation, support city efforts related to preparing a candidate's handbook, nomination forms and candidate's statements, schedule candidate appointments, forward candidate statements to Martin &amp; Chapman. These are the duties, like I said, that the city clerk's office will handle, so we will not be, be billed for these, these costs. Polling locations and precinct workers, establishing procedures for obtaining polling locations and the hiring of precinct workers, training all precinct workers, which is a mandatory training that must be conducted. Donna will be handling that training session. Forwarding polling locations to Martin &amp; Chapman for placement in our ballot. Going to the absentee voting process, Donna will also oversee and prepare AV, absentee voter guidelines for the AV board, and that, those are the guidelines that will assist us with our absentee voter process as we review those. Establishing procedures for storing the ballots, review and resolve any problem applications or ballots. Those cases would be something related to a different address or a ballot not being signed. Related to the election evening, she will assist us in designing the central counting center, which is our council chamber, and then prepare a list of workers for election night boards. There are several boards, a logic and accuracy board, ballot receiving board, inspection board, and the boards that I'm naming, those are the boards that we will be enlisting assistance from city staff members to assist us in those processes. The election canvas, she will assist in preparing the canvas procedures, training city clerk's office staff, also the signature verification process, which is the absentee voter and provisional ballot process. She will assist in that area. And then also counting one precinct manually, that's also a state mandate that we count one precinct manually during the canvas. And then also, other activities, preparing payroll for the precinct workers, proofing and reviewing the printed items from Martin &amp; Chapman. And then also, she will be available by phone and email and fax several months prior to the election, but as we get closer to the election, she will keep regular office hours at City Hall. So, and as I indicated, all of the duties that I've just gone over are in our work plan, and they've already accounted, they're accounted for, and also with the deadlines that are associated with each of those.
You may have seen and heard some redundancy in some of the functions, and, you know, that's an essential part of this whole process, to have a lot of check and balances and verifications. So there is some redundancy, but there are also different aspects of those functions that are carried out. One may be a consultation question as to what's required, the other one would be the actual assistance in preparing the information and doing the wordsmithing, if you will, okay? At this point, now we're in the third part of our presentation, we're progressing right along. We're really fortunate to have Margarita Campos with us today. She's a city clerk from the city of Burbank. She has been with the city of Burbank for 33 years, the last six years as a city clerk. During her tenure, Margarita has held several standalone elections, vote-by-mail, and traditional poll elections. She's often referred to via the city clerk's networking system as a person that you really need to call if you have any questions related to the vote-by-mail election process, so we're really happy that she's here with us today. She received her BA in business law from the University of West Los Angeles. She's an active member of the local League of Women Voters, and I really, you know, once again, want to thank her for, for being here today in the midst of an election, and I know how much work that is and how much pressure that is, and we thank you for being here too. Margarita Campos.
Can I borrow one of these, just to show them? While you're going up there, I just want to add my, on behalf of the council, my thanks too, because you've got just a few weeks until your election, and I know how, now we know what it entails. So I really appreciate you taking your time out, and also being open to having people come from here to, to observe what you're doing. It's really nice of you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, and it truly is my pleasure to be here and present to you Burbank's experience with the mail ballot. What I'm going to do is I'm going to give you a little overview of both of the processes and how Burbank got to, to go to the mail ballot. In our first slide, I just want to talk to you a little bit about, prior to 2005, the city of Burbank always used polling site elections and always has conducted their own elections. In 1999, the Burbank City Council passed an ordinance to authorize that special municipal elections be conducted wholly by mailed ballots. But several other events occurred in 2001, which influenced Burbank's decision to move to the mail ballot. First of all, the California Secretary of State in 2001 decertified punch-card voting systems in nine counties, which included Los Angeles County. This meant that 73 out of the 88 cities in LA County who conduct their own elections would be affected by the ruling. And this also ensured that Burbank voters would be using an optical scan system, which you can use as easily at home as you can at the polls, and the OptaMark system that Martin &amp; Chapman uses is exactly that, it's an optical scan system. Another major driver in Burbank was Measure A, which was an initiative, a special election that the city conducted. And this election, which was conducted in October of '01, garnered 34.8% voter turnout, which represents the highest voter turnout in the history of a Burbank municipal election. Next, after the success of Measure A, the council requested to report on the available options with regard to conducting mail ballot elections for the city's primary and general elections, and I did that. I prepared a report for them, and ultimately, the council ordered that an advisory vote on mail ballot elections be placed on Burbank's ballot in 2003. This ballot measure was called Measure M, the Advisory Vote on Mail Ballot Elections, which appeared on our ballot in the primary of 2003, and it passed with 63.6% of the voters in support of the measure. Our council subsequently passed an ordinance ordering that the primary and general elections be conducted by mail. Another issue which contributed to Burbank's decision was the steady growth of the absentee voter rate. By 2003, almost half of Burbank's voters were voting absentee, and with changes in the law allowing any voter to become a permanent absentee voter, many of our voters were doing exactly that. With this high rate of absentee voters, we were basically conducting two types of elections simultaneously, one a polling place election and one a mail ballot election. Burbank was certainly not alone at this time in experiencing such a trend. Statistics show that of the 16 cities which conducted municipal elections in the first half of the 2004 cycle, more than 56% of the voters cast their ballots by mail, and some of the cities showed a rate as high- of the cities showed a rate as high as 67% in absentee voting. Now we'll talk a little bit about the benefits of the mail ballot. When you use the mail ballot system, all your voters are provided three weeks within which to cast the ballot. And I'm going to show you what our voters are going to receive next week. They're going to get an envelope that looks like this, and right here it shows their name and their address, and their voter ID number is on a barcode down here. So when the voter receives this packet, they will get, this is our voter information pamphlet, and it is bilingual, as yours will be, as required by federal law. That's what this is. This is actually our envelope. Our instructions are printed up here, English on one side, Spanish on the other. The voter will rip this off, they'll put their ballot in here, this will serve as a secrecy sleeve, and then they put the whole thing inside of this envelope, and they sign their name right here at the red X, which is extremely important, because without a signature, you can't verify the ballot. And the most important thing that we put in here is the ballot, and this is Burbank's ballot for our election, which will take place next month. This shows everything, all of our candidates for city council and for school board in English and in Spanish. So this is what our voters will be receiving in one week. In a polling site election, you basically have one day to vote, unless you are voting absentee. And if you're voting absentee, you're voting by mail anyway, so you might as well do it, right? Individuals vote their ballots in the convenience of their homes, and they return the voted ballot by mail or by personal delivery to City Hall or to a designated drop-off place. And the reason we allow people to return their ballots in person is to address privacy concerns, because there are people that have a lot of concerns about putting their signature through the US mail, and so that's what we do. We allow them to bring it in in person. The City Clerk's Office in Burbank is open from 8:00 to 5:00 on weekdays, and voters can drop off their ballots there anytime during the week from 8:00 to 5:00. In addition, we have four other drop-off sites that are open on the Saturday prior to the election from 10:00 to 2:00, and on Election Day from 7:00 to 7:00. So altogether, we actually have five designated drop-off sites, all housed in public facilities throughout the city of Burbank. Another benefit of the mail ballot is safeguarding the integrity of the elections, which I think is really of the utmost importance. The mail ballot process requires the use of a very strict verification process. When you vote at the polls, you all know that your signature is not verified. In a mail ballot election, signatures are required on all returned ballots, and the voter's registration and signature are verified before the ballot is counted. In addition, each returned ballot that we receive is scanned into a computer system using the barcode that I told you about on the label, and so that way we eliminate duplicate voting. Another benefit is increased voter participation. In the 2005 primary, Burbank actually didn't experience a significant increase, perhaps due to the fact that this was the first time that Burbank voters were using the mail ballot in a regular election. However, the increase, the ballot turnout increased from 19.1% in the primary to 23.9% in the general, and we just conducted a special election exactly a year ago, and our return for that was 24.3%. So I think you can see that we're making slow but steady progress, and that makes me very happy. Next is improving the quality of voter records. There is absolutely no question that the quality of voter records is improved in the use of the mail ballot, because the voter's information is verified on every single ballot. We utilize a service called Address Change Service that is provided by the United States Postal Service, and what they do is, they actually scan onto CDs all of the addresses of the undeliverable ballots, and so they mail us all of these CDs. We take the CDs, we send them to the County of Los Angeles Clerk, and the clerk is able to take the information on the CDs, update our voter records, and they purge all of our records every two years as we have an election. And that's really, that's really great opportunity to keep your voter registration list up to date. Next is eliminating the facilities and poll worker recruitment problems. With regard to the polling sites themselves, the use of the mail ballot election eliminates facilities recruitment problems and poll worker recruitment problems. It's very challenging to locate sites in each precinct which provide for disabled access, sufficient parking, sufficient space for the polls without disruption to the normal use of the site, and amenities necessary for the poll workers during a 12- to 14-hour day. In a mail ballot election, your polling site can be your own home. Rather than securing 42 polling sites, because we have 42 precincts in Burbank, so rather than securing 42 polling sites, when we use the mail ballot, we secure only five, and those are all in city of Burbank public facilities. These accept ballots from 8:00 to 5:00 on weekdays, and the alternate drop-off sites are used twice, and that's for Saturday voting and for voting on Election Day. In addition, we identify one secure area in Burbank City Hall which is used as a ballot processing center for several weeks, which covers both our primary and general elections. In a polling site election, we would approximately hire 200 election workers. Recruiting capable workers presents challenges all its own, and if you haven't done that, you're going to agree with me, it's not as easy as it sounds. And the Burbank Municipal Code requires that our election workers be registered Burbank voters, so that even cuts down the amount of workers that we can hire from. For the mail ballot election, we hire approximately 30 workers to process ballots and serve on the ballot drop-off and canvassing boards. So there's a big difference there. Decrease the election costs. Decreased election costs are another benefit of using the mail ballot. Our vendor, Martin and Chapman, notes that mail ballot elections cost somewhere between 5% and 10% less than polling site elections, and we've definitely found that to be true. Our election costs typically increase by as much as $30,000 from one election cycle to the next. The cost for the last election, which we conducted in January of '06, was approximately $120,000, which is almost average with the cost of our 2005 elections. Okay, now for some of the drawbacks. Drawbacks for the mail ballot process include voter resistance and confusion. This isn't new for some voters, and some may be very confused about the process, because after all, human beings are creatures of habit and naturally resist change. But then voters are often frustrated by the fact that polling sites change all the time, depending on who conducts the election, so there's confusion either way. Another concern is that voters don't always remember to re-register when they move, and their ballot will be mailed to wherever they happen to be registered. To address this issue, in Burbank, we send out a postcard to every Burbank household, and it went out a week ago, and it looks like this. It's a very simple little postcard, and all it does is tell the voters that, look for your ballot in the mail, we're having an election, and you should be receiving your ballot in a couple of weeks. So whether you're a registered voter or not, you're going to get this postcard. It's going to remind you, if you haven't re-registered, and it might even hopefully remind you that you need to register to vote. Next is concerns with identity theft. This is a definite drawback to the mail ballot. However, we have addressed these concerns by providing our voters with options of returning their voted ballots. And I can tell you, in Burbank, 90% of the ballots are returned in the mail, so I don't know how true this holds in Burbank. Most people are pretty comfortable with it. A very small number of our ballots are actually dropped at drop-off sites. Also, there is a potential for loss of secrecy or undue influence. When you have the ability to vote at home, some people would say, well, you know, your spouse can influence your vote, or, you know, whatever. But that could also happen at the polls, because voters have the right to bring with them someone to assist them to vote, and the election workers at the polls really can't question you as to who that person is or how they're assisting you to vote. So the loss of secrecy, I think, really applies to both polling place or mail ballot, and Burbank really hasn't had an issue in either of those situations. Next, I want to talk to you a little bit about early voting. Some election consultants and candidates don't like the fact that people can vote early if they've been given a live ballot prior to Election Day. And remember, I told you, in Burbank, you're going to get a live ballot three weeks before Election Day. However, you need to remember that voters can and do request absentee ballots anywhere from 29 to seven days prior to any election, and in Burbank, that certainly did occur. Due to these concerns with people voting early, we make sure that our voter outreach is, all culminates before the ballots go out. So the League of Women Voters conducts a candidate forum, we make sure that we get that on the air way before the ballots go out. All of our outreach material goes out, so that by the time a voter gets this packet in the mail, they are well aware of what's going on, and they have received a lot of material and a lot of reminders about the election, giving people ample opportunity to learn about the candidates. Some of the challenges that we faced with the mail ballot, especially the first time around, misplaced ballots. A lot of people called and let us know that they didn't get a ballot. However, you never really know if they threw it in the trash or what the deal is, so all we did was reissue ballots. It's not a big deal, you know, we can reissue ballots at Burbank City Hall, so if for some reason a voter threw it away, or whatever reason, they can always call us and we'll send them another one, because after all, they can only vote one time. Once we scan your ballot in, and we know that that ballot is in our ballot processing center, we will not reissue you a ballot. But up until that time, if you lose it or spoil it or whatever, we'll reissue the ballot. Next, the out-voter registration list. The first time we conducted an election, we found thousands of voters on our list who either had left Burbank or were deceased. And so really, this gave us the opportunity to update the voter registration list. And our voter registration actually has gone from over 55,000, and it now stands at 50,000-something. So you can see how helpful it is to purge your list every couple of years like we do. Also, we had a lot of voters forget to sign the back of their envelope, and as I showed you, if you forget to sign the envelope, we cannot verify your signature, and we will call you and say, sorry, but you need to come sign this, or, you know, make arrangements to bring it out. We did bring ballots out to the elderly or people who had no way to get to City Hall. I actually sent two workers to their home and have them sign their ballot. We also redesigned the return envelope, so what we're using today is different than the one we used the first time around, so that voters can't possibly miss the big red X on the back of the envelope. Next, signatures not matching. Most people register to vote when they're very, very young, and so as the years go by and your signature changes, you'll find that it doesn't look anything like it looked when you were 18. So when this happened to us, we would send the voter a letter and say, you know, we got your ballot, but your signature doesn't match. Could you come in with a form of ID, and we'll re-register you with your current signature, and that's how we remedied that situation. We also had difficulty reporting the results the first time around in a timely manner, and that is because of the very strict verification process. There's just no way to cut that process down, and we wouldn't want to, because the whole point of the mail ballot is to verify those ballots. And so in order to fix that the second time around, we simply doubled the number of people that we're verifying and doubled the number of people that were canvassing on Election Night, and that way we were able to report the results in the same exact time period as we would be able to result, to post results in a polling site election. And next, post office procedures. I did have to meet with post office officials in Burbank and let them know about the importance of the fact that we were mailing live ballots. Once we got through that process, actually, things have turned out pretty well in Burbank, and we're working very closely with the post office now. And finally, I'm going to show you voter turnout. As you can see, a slow but steady increase in Burbank, but still moving right along, which I think really is significant for us. And I would conclude by telling you that I don't believe any election system is perfect by any means. The most significant difference between the polling site and the mail ballot system is that the mail ballot system puts each and every ballot through a very strict verification process. This process makes the system more time-consuming and labor-intensive for staff, unfortunately for you, Cindy. However, it results in verified ballots, which you will not get in a polling site election. Having conducted both polling site and mail ballot elections, I prefer the mail ballot system, because it provides the most convenience to the voters and best protects the integrity of the ballot. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. We have a number of people that would like to speak, but I know there's some questions too. So Mr. Lopez, are you going to do this, or?
Yeah, for my closing comments, we placed on each of you, in front of you, a summary that we received from another study in Washington that I thought that really provides a fair assessment and comparison of the pros and cons, points in favor and against, a poll election versus a vote by mail election. I found the points that they presented to be, you know, very accurate. You can look at some of these points here, and we've given you a few examples. Points in favor of a poll election is traditional, you know, people prefer to go to the polls, there's that public contact, a sense of community. On the points in favor in the vote by mail, it increases voter participation, it eliminates facility rental problems, lower election costs. Designated drop-off centers are one of the features that can be incorporated to provide for a poll election. For people that want to go and drop off their ballot, so we have drop-off centers. Eliminates the poll workers' recruitment problems. Points against, against some arising some of these facility rental problems, lower voter participation with a poll election, higher election costs, more labor-intensive, again, poll worker recruitment problems. On the vote by mail ballot election, you know, for us, we're looking at a change. The city of Santa Barbara running its own election, breaking away from the county in that sense, so we're doing a change on top of another change, so that I think is a significant point. There's some voter confusion and resistance, fears about the US mail, fear of a loss of secrecy, early voting concerns, and I think what you find in all of these arguments, for everyone that likes, who likes to do it one way, has their good arguments, and the opposite is true for the other, but the piece that I gave you is pretty well-balanced. Can I go back to the slide on the one dealing with the issue? I think this tells us why we really need to run our own election, and I wish this were my stock portfolio, you know, a few variations and then it takes off. Unfortunately, it isn't. And what you see is the costs are rising. So that answers a question. One of the questions that the council needs to sanction is, should the city conduct its own election? Then the second, the second point is dealing with the questions of what type of an election should the city conduct? A poll election or a vote by mail election? Those are the principal issues that we wanted to bring to you. The ordinance committee felt that this question, this issue was so large that it should be handled here at the council level, and for that reason, it was referred to you for review. There are two other pieces that the ordinance committee is working on. One is the video voter website information. That's going on a separate track altogether. We are having a meeting this week with representatives from the League of Women Voters to figure out the next steps. We feel that that process can, on its own track, can be handled expeditiously. And then secondly, and then lastly, we have the issue of election reform and potential for an ordinance, and we are having a discussion led by the city attorney on February 6. It's a discussion that's going to be very similar to this discussion, where we are inviting members of the public to participate, and at that time, the ordinance committee is going to receive additional feedback from the community, and eventually take their work back to the city council for a determination. Madam Mayor, council members, this concludes my presentation, and we are ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Council members, do you have some questions? I think maybe we'll just go down the line here, because Ms. Campos or Mr. Lopez, you can ask either one. Mr. House, go ahead.
Just real simple, is the postage prepaid on the ballots, or does somebody have to put a stamp on it?
No. In Burbank, our voters do have to pay postage if they choose to mail it. However, just between you and I, I pay for the postage on everything that gets delivered to the post office, whether they put a stamp on it or not. I don't disenfranchise anybody. There's an argument here about paying people to vote if you pay for the postage, and that's the reason why we don't pay it. We never want to pay for a vote.
And it looked like a non-standard size envelope. Do you have to put extra postage on it?
No, regular postage.
Okay.
But it would come from the post office if it didn't have a stamp on it.
Yes.
She's saying is she would pay the 39 cents or whatever.
Yes, we would pay.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members.
Yes, Mr. Lopez.
Our plans call for us including the cost of the stamp, including the stamp as part of the mailing process. So our cost projections include that.
Thank you.
Right, okay. Ms. Falcone?
I don't have any questions at this point, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Horton?
Just from the finance committee perspective, I think the costs, the angle of the curve there that Marsala was talking about, show that we need to look at this right now. Thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Williams?
I have a lot of concerns about mail ballot elections, and I guess my questions hinge on really whether we can on really whether we can truly substantiate whether higher turnouts are achieved. I remain unconvinced, because I don't think that one substantially similar election is very conclusive evidence. Because special elections can vary radically in turnout based on what's on the ballot. So, we can't use special elections as evidence.
That's right. That's why what I gave you, the numbers I gave you, were all for municipal elections, not special.
And I guess what I would be, there's a, I saw from your chart, or from your breakdown, that there was a 6.6% rise in one substantially similar election.
In the special, the special election?
No, the general election before mail ballot and the general election after mail ballot. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. And then, what I would be interested to see is to see if those results were uniform citywide. I'm not familiar with all of the neighborhoods in Burbank, but what, my concern would be the comparison in working-class neighborhoods. We, I've worked in about 22 elections, and so I think that in sort of upper-class or middle-class, upper-middle-class neighborhoods, I don't have turnout concerns concerning mail ballot elections. But I do in working-class neighborhoods. And I would like to see if there are some neighborhoods that we could compare our Lower East Side, our Lower West Side, our Oak Park with, in Burbank, and look at those precincts and see what the difference is in turnout in that election and elsewhere. Because the critique of the Oregon special election is that Oregon, you're dealing with a much more homogeneous population statewide than we have, and that many of the low-income communities are rural. So, that your potential for raising turnout among low-income communities in Oregon may not be at all comparable to low-income communities in California. And so, to me, I don't measure the success of elections on the cost savings. I measure the success of elections on how many people participate. And so, is that information that you could get to us, or that you have right now, or?
I don't have it with me. I do have precincts, only because people are interested in those precinct turnouts, and I'm happy to forward that to you. But I don't think you're going to find any significant difference between, in Burbank's case, the valley neighborhood as opposed to the hillside neighborhood. I think the turnout is very, very constant everywhere.
And are you confident that there are no other factors comparing, creating the difference in turnout between, because when we're looking at only one election, as opposed to, if we wanted to say this is statistically valid, we would take at least 100 substantially similar elections and compare turnout. And if we had a 95% confidence level, then we would be able to conclusively say that it does raise turnout. But one case study is difficult to tease out.
Yes, but remember, Burbank just started this process in '03, and we conduct elections every two years. So, what I've given you is everything since the change, and that's all I can give you.
I guess anecdotally, do you think that there are any other factors that may have affected turnout, the turnout difference, 6.6% turnout difference?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. These are primary and general elections with nothing more exciting on the ballot, as opposed to a special election with a very volatile issue. No, nothing like that.
And no difference in, say, voter discontent, or the amount of money that was spent in the election, or anything?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I don't know if I missed it. How does the city and then the county who takes care of voter registration, how is that coordinated in terms of voter registration drives up to the last day when people can register to vote, and then the city's ability to verify signatures with all those new registered cards?
The voter registration list, we are not the custodian of that record. As you know, the county is the custodian of the voter registration list. And all we can do is forward registration applications to the county. It's up to the county to process them and add or delete voters from the list. So, the city really has no ability to alter that list at all. The ability that we have, that we have used, is in providing the county with data that comes not from us, but from the US Postal Service, letting the county know these ballots were all undeliverable, either because the person has moved, or the person is deceased, or for whatever reason. And so, that, in essence, gives us the ability to ask the county to please purge our voter records. There's a lot of wasted money when you send out election material to people who are no longer there. And so, of course, the county, who also conducts statewide elections in Burbank, has a vested interest in updating the data, because it saves them money as well. So, in that sense, we really don't have the ability to manipulate the list. We do, however, have the ability to verify ballots directly from the county's list, and that's through a service that they have that we subscribe to. We can actually go online, call up the person's voter registration form, and actually view their signature and compare it with our ballot. And that way, we don't have to pay the county to verify every single signature, because that's very costly.
Okay, thank you. It reminds me, some spot special elections, the county took care of the statewide. Or how did that, how did that work when you had a statewide election within the city of Burbank? Did you take care of it? Did it go back to the county?
No. In the city of Burbank, we have three different entities that conduct elections. One of them is the city clerk, and what I conduct is municipal elections. The city of Los Angeles also has on their ballot things that concern Burbank voters. For example, this year in March, the city of Los Angeles is conducting a primary election. They actually have to send ballots to Burbank-registered voters, because there's one question on that ballot with regard to the Community College District that Burbank voters have a right to vote on. And then, the county of Los Angeles conducts all the statewide elections. And each of these people do it on their own, which is confusing to voters, and you really can't avoid that.
So, the voters are getting three different ballots?
But not at the same time. Because they get our ballots in February.
But the voting date's the same?
No, never the same. Burbank's primary is in February, which is very unique. And our general is the second Tuesday in April. And nobody else...
Okay, so they're all separate dates. So, let me go back to the city of Santa Barbara. In 2005, there was a city municipal election and a statewide election on the same day. How would that have worked for the city voters? They would gotten, would they receive two different ballots to go in two different places?
If you conduct your own, yes. If you conduct your own election, the city of Long Beach does that. The county actually conducts elections the same day as the city of Long Beach. And they actually do it at the same time, on the same day.
Okay, so the county, so let's say 2005 is an example. Let's say we had our mail, let's say we did a mail order, mail order, is that right?
No.
Mail only. Not on the quality shopping town here. So... A voter would have two ballots. They would have to make sure to drop off or mail the city one to the city and vote, if they're not a permanent absentee ballot person for the state, have to go on election day to a polling place. Or would that be consolidated, because the polling place is also in the city? You see where I'm going with this? Can you help me out?
Well, council members, I can answer one question. Our ability to request a consolidated election coincides, and in fact, our ability to insist that the county consolidate, hold a consolidated election, coincides with a legal requirement that the county conduct an election. So, for example, in November of 2007, this year, it is apparent that the county will not be required to conduct any election for other public entities unless, for example, and the governor again calls a special statewide election.
Right.
Now, I have to, I think most of us think that that was pretty rare in November of 2005. It's going to be even more rare that the governor will call for a special statewide election. So, in November of 2007, we will, in all likelihood, not have a consolidated election opportunity. In November of 2005, we did have the ability, because we knew in, I think, September or October, that the governor had called a special election to insist that the county consolidate.
Okay, but if the city of Santa Barbara had a mail-only, let's say we were doing our own mail-only in 2005, and the state special election does not require that, right?
Right.
So, in the future, if this were to happen again, and we would go to a mail-only municipal ballot, are there, what would happen? How would the voter vote on those two different ones?
If I understand correctly, let's say 2009, the city clerk's office, the city is gearing up for a mail ballot election in November of 2009. That is a, under the city charter now, it's going to be an election year for us. But let's say in September of 2009, the governor calls a special statewide election, or for whatever reason, you know, could be a lot of different things. The state, we would have the ability to back off and say, you know, "This year, we're going to ask the council adopt a resolution requesting consolidation," or actually, in a sense, demanding consolidation, and that the county would then be obligated to conduct a poll election for the city.
Okay, that answers it.
Yeah.
And back to Burbank, when it went to mail-only, it was a voter-advised measure on the ballot first that moved it from a polling place to mail-only. Is that what you said?
That's right.
What was your sense of the, how voters thought about making the change prior to that advisory measure? And obviously, they liked it, they voted for it. But was the process of having that measure on the ballot contribute to the voter education piece to help people understand what it is they're talking about, as opposed to a city saying, "We're now just going to have mail-only ballots"?
I think the purpose of the advisory measure was for the council to take the public's temperature. Although the numbers, the absentee numbers, were rising and have been rising for quite some time, they wanted to bring that before the voters, before they made a decision on whether or not to amend our code to allow us to do it. And obviously, it passed with 6 to 3-point-something percent of the voters approving. So, I think it gives the council more of a sense of reassurance, you know, that the voters are in agreement with what they're planning on doing. I don't know how, how much really of an education component that really played, because that was two years before we actually did it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
If I could add on that last question.
Sure.
For reasons that I'm not aware of, in 1982, as part of, I would say, about seven or eight charter amendments, charter cleanup things that went to the voters to vote on as charter amendments, there was Charter Section 1306, which authorizes the city council to, by resolution, order city elections to be conducted by mail. So, Burbank went to their voters with an advisory question and then moved forward. We've already got that authority in our charter. And as I say, I don't know the background behind that. It seems to be kind of out there all on its own, because we certainly have never utilized it. But now, 25 years later, it's sort of, one of the reasons why this discussion has been, you know, a lot easier. We don't have to ask the voters for charter authority to do this.
Let me test my memory a little bit. I think that was the year that we did, that we changed over to term elections, wasn't it? And that was the, there was an election reform committee. I can't remember what they called it. Was that the year?
I think you may be thinking of 1990.
Oh, 90.
When we got term, we had three things on the ballot in 1990. Term limits, districts, council districts, and...
Something else.
Something else.
But '82 was the time.
'82 with Charter Section 1507, the, sort of, the impacts-to-growth amendment to the charter.
Okay, interesting. So, if we wanted to, what you're saying is, if we wanted to conduct a by-mail, we don't need to have a charter amendment?
No, it's already been done.
It's already there.
And it just takes a council resolution to order it.
Okay. And Mr. Lopez, did you have something you wanted to add in there?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If we changed our charter and went to even-numbered-year elections, how would the vote-by-mail work? Where we share a ballot with state, county, and city, do we then, is all of that on a vote-by-mail for us?
I think that's what Ms. Schneider was asking.
Even if we go to the even-numbered years, whether it's, okay. The signature match?
Consolidated.
No, what?
Well, there's a reaction. We probably wouldn't recommend that we do it. For example, we had a measure on last November's ballot, November of 2006, and I believe the cost was $37,000. That's, while we may disagree with how the county seeks reimbursement, at numbers like 37 versus 30, say, it's barely worth the argument, and it's probably not worth conducting our own election. So, the premise, if the premise is that we would go to an even-year elections, then we probably wouldn't be talking about the city conducting its own elections at all, whether mail ballot or otherwise.
Right. Well, you've just, you took my question to the next step. If we are thinking about changing to even-numbered years, then this discussion right here could be moot. And if we changed to even-numbered years in a timely fashion, it's possible that this could be the only election that we did in vote-by-mail. Am I correct on that? Am I thinking correctly there, or not?
Well...
I mean, let's just say we vote in a timely fashion, we get it on the ballot, and we decide to change from odd-numbered years to even-numbered years. And we complete that process in the next 18 to 24 months, then we have the $37 to $50,000 cost, and this whole process would pass.
Councilmember Barnwell, I don't want to take too much time on this, because it's very complex. But I scoped out some questions on that scenario. And just to show you how complex it gets very quickly to have the city go to an even-numbered election. Not that it can't be done, because I believe we did the reverse in the 70s, because the, we got to odd-year elections in November, with a charter change effective 1979. And then, I can tell there's some cleanup things, but it's this transition that's extremely complex. So, you know, we, at this point, there's no question, we're holding a city election. And this is really the immediate question. And why we were holding this thing in January, we're having an election in this city in November 2007, because we've got three council members whose terms are up. So, possibly then, well, what if we put on that ballot, a charter amendment to go to even-year November elections? Right? Then what happens to the terms of the existing council members?
Right.
Not only existing, the council members who were on the ballot in November of 2007. Well, you could say, "Well, we got some people whose terms are up in 2009, but we're going to shorten their terms. We're going to take a year away from their terms." Number one, yeah, right. I'm not even sure if the people involved consent that that's constitutional.
Yeah.
Right.
I think once you voted for somebody...
So, then what's, well, then what do you, well, you add to their terms. You add a year to get them to an even cycle. So, that's another thing you put on the ballot in November of 2007.
And you violate our term limits law.
Then you, "Oh, we got to clean up the term limits." So, I, that's what I mean when I say, "I just got a lot of questions and no answers at this point."
Okay.
And even just, I could string it out, like, November, let's say it's approved, November 2008, we've got another election. Then what happens to the council members whose terms are November of 2009? Well, they're going to be, their terms will be extended as well. It gets very complex, and to the point where, I think the main point is, we've got to figure this out now, because we are holding an election in 11 months, or actually, less. And it, what happens if the voters don't approve this? And I can see that. In my experience, there's two, two very substantial sides to this question of odd versus even, extending terms. And it has to do with reform issues about, well, incumbents will be too favored by this, incumbents will get extra time. We tried to make a simple amendment to membership on ABR, and someone said, "Well, that could allow someone from Nebraska to be on our ABR." And that was crazy, but we've had, don't have good luck in getting approval for further...
Okay. Well, I'm glad we got that explanation, because that, I know it took a little bit of time. But I think, for me, that's a critical issue. And if we're here now because of a high cost through the county to run an off-year election, then if cost is an engine that drives this discussion, then we should talk about getting back in cycle with the county, because that is another way to significantly lower our cost, and to also lower our obligation to run an election. I am very nervous about the city adopting the legal, moral, ethical obligation of running an election. We do so many things. We do a harbor, we do an airport, we do parks, we do all that stuff. And being responsible for an election gives me the cold wobblies. And I think that the statements that were made by Mr. Williams are some that I share. To what degree... To what degree are we disenfranchising a segment of the voters by having them respond to something that's in the mail, that they have to fill out, that maybe they don't get any assistance on, and then they have, it has to go back through the mail? I don't want to necessarily say the working class, but, you know, people who may have some language impairment to understand English, even though it's in Spanish. I mean, I don't want to disenfranchise those people, and I don't want to burden our own staff either, so... And then the last comment I would like to ask, or question is, in the signature match issue, does that slow down the timeliness of election results, such that we might not get the election results until the next day, or something like that?
That has not been our experience. We do verify our own signatures. It is, it only takes a second to do that. Anything that we cannot verify, we do have to send to the county. So the election, the results that you post on, well, when you conduct your own election, you're going to post preliminary results on election night.
Okay.
But those are not final until all of the questionable votes are counted, usually towards the end of the week, anyway. But the fact of the matter is, it won't change the outcome. The numbers will change slightly, but it won't change the outcome.
Thank you.
Okay? And we do report at the same, the results are reported in the same timeframe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We have six people who would like to speak. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Falcone, go ahead.
Sorry. The discussion just brought up two quick, they're quick, we'll get to the public in a sec. If we, even if we did change to even-numbered-years, I share a lot of the conservatives that I've heard down the road here. It still wouldn't, I mean, I know by pro-rata sharing of cost, it would substantially reduce what they're trying to charge us now, but it doesn't guarantee any amount that they would charge us. So, you know, they can just claim that the costs have gone through the roof, and we might, or might not be saving any money. Isn't that true?
That's correct. It's just the cost-sharing formula, you're sharing it with so many more, you're arguing on, over, over less.
Understood, but you're still not setting an amount that...
Yeah. The point is that there is not agreement on the proper methodology.
No, I understand the problem that we're in right now, and why we can't come to terms with the county. The other question has to do with the charter change that you mentioned in 1982 that authorized the city to use mail ballots, or to use ballots that go through the mail, as opposed to only at a polling place. But I would ask you, there's a slight distinction between that and that authority, and an all postage requirement, that we would be asking, that we wouldn't be asking the voters, would you like to do this? And here's an alternative in the polling place. We are requiring them to do that. Now, does that change, I mean, we don't really have that authority. We have the authority to use mail ballots, or postal ballots, look at all the mails in the audience here, but, all postal ballots, but a requirement is somehow slightly different, or maybe I'm just making too much out of it.
I'm not following you. We, the charter authority is clearly to use only mail-in ballots.
Oh, only? So we have that extended authority for cutting off the polling places as well?
Right. But if I understood correctly, the presentation correctly, we would have some places to drop off a ballot. You just wouldn't be going into a booth and marking them. I suppose you could if you wanted to.
Well, you have to have drop-off places, but yeah, okay.
Yeah. I think that's what Ms. Rodriguez was saying, four drop-off places, plus extended hours for City Hall. Okay. Mr. Wass will be first, followed by Patricia Hiles. And then Emily Allen.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, it is a great pleasure to be here today to addressing a problem that we're having with our democracy. That's what we like to see. We like to see our councilmembers struggling with basic issues, and this is a basic issue, and I hope you have to sweat a lot, because we need a lot of basic democracy right here, right now. Just a couple of comments. I see with Santa Barbara, this diverse population, is that to run into a lot of problems with people not understanding what this is all about? And so I think we would have more problems than most communities, so I would use every means available to educate them, well in advance, using television, both public and private, and radio programs, and public forums. I think that's really very important, okay? I was certainly gratified to hear that by doing our own elections, we would save all that rather large amount of money, which could be used sometime in the future to pass some sort of city-financed campaign election law. I also am gratified to hear this talking of switching to even-years. I think that is very good. So here again, I think it's important to get this thing off right. Let's educate the heck out of the voters, so that they feel like by the time they get there, they've been doing this for years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patricia Hiles will be followed by Emily Allen.
Good afternoon. As far as the populace being behind a mail-in ballot, you're probably all aware that 60% of our people vote by mail anyhow, voluntarily, and I think that shows support for this position. I would like to address the cost. As I, I don't have it in writing, but my notes show that Ventura costs $47,000, and Santa Barbara is projecting $307,000. Ventura has more voters than Santa Barbara. I'd like to know why it's going to cost Santa Barbara so much more than Ventura. Is it the consultants?
We probably need to ask the city, the county administrator. We have no idea. We're working on it. Mr. Armstrong, maybe, can I answer that for you?
In Ventura, the county, the county still runs the elections for the city of Ventura, and so they do get some of the economies of scale, and they're not charging the same way our county does. In this case, we would actually run the entire election, so that's why the cost would be higher for us, but still substantially below what our county proposes to charges.
So I will tell you, another anecdotal part of that is that Ventura requires the voters to send in postage along with that, and that's 87 cents in the last election. So that's a lot of money when you're talking about 60,000 voters or county-wide. That's just a part of it, but that's one part that, and I guess an evidence of, a question of quality versus cost.
Okay. And then what was the cost in 2005 that seemed to be conspicuous by its absence?
Of our election, Jimmy?
Yes. Does anyone know?
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yep. The 2005 cost? We didn't include it on there, because it was a statewide, it was a special statewide that the governor called, and so the numbers would have been skewed from the others.
Yes. Okay, fine, thank you. And then, I'm anxious to hear about the election reform discussion on February 6th. When and where will that be?
It's a, I'm sorry, a city ordinance committee, so it'll be in...
Or it will be at the ordinance...
No, it's going to be, it's going to be in the Gephardt Room, because we want to have a more relaxed atmosphere, and I believe that's at 12 o'clock? Is it? Ms. Rodriguez?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, tentatively, I think we're looking at 12 o'clock. We will put out a public notice. There will be notice, a regular notice meeting, so it will be noticed. Right now, you can plan that it's at noon, or a little bit later, on February 6th. If it's a little bit later, it might be 12:30, but noon time, I think is a safe one.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Emily Allen, I lose my voice here, followed by David Pritchett.
Hi. As I've said to council before, I'm with progressive Democrats in Santa Barbara, and fair elections and inclusive elections are something that have been an issue since our formation. And, you know, public financing is still something we're concerned about. And one thing that's come up when we've talked about public financing, of course, is the cost. And I would like to make sure that if we do move to standalone elections, or vote by mail, or we are able to align ourselves in even-years, that we take any savings, and we do consider directing that towards public financing, because that's something, here in this very room, at the Women's Political Committee meeting, the speaker talked about how cost is really a barrier to both women and minority citizens, and I think that that's something that community groups have brought to the attention of the city. So that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. David Pritchett, followed by Brian Olson. And then our last speaker will be Anna Risa.
Good afternoon. According to our presentation on the screen, we have a whole nother year to handle this issue. It's 2006 there. I think you all need to really get a better handle on what are these actual cost savings. As Emily Allen just mentioned, a lot of the impetus a few months ago was that the reason the city was not pushing forward for public finance is that where the money comes from out of the general fund was still impossible to say. So I still think that the concept to move to even-year elections should not be dismissed right now. All of the issues that would have to be addressed, as Mr. Wiley said, could be in one package of questions, and that could free up several hundred thousand dollars the city has to devote as a starting point for public finance. And I would propose, the only way to handle that is that the terms are extended here, not shortened. But anyway, I just don't dismiss that and have another meeting to figure it out, and really get a staff report on what all the questions would have to be in one action. And maybe in 1979, that made sense to go to odd-years, but it's going to be 30 years later, and things change, I've heard. For more details about this, I think you ought to, for mail-in balloting, or postal balloting, let's just call it postal balloting, I think you have got some dangling questions about how to deal with a due date to drop off versus a due date for a postmark, and will that create a whole lot of provisional ballots that leave the outcome uncertain? I'm glad you've got the signature verification planned out, using the Burbank model. Who wants to imagine what our signatures were when we first registered to vote in Santa Barbara County? It's pretty scary there. It's not the subject today, but the public is looking at this as a package of issues besides postal balloting. Video voters still remains a good idea. I hope that ad hoc committee meets sometime. I'm still interested, by the way. Another package that the public's interested in is better financial disclosure by candidates. Ventura County has some good examples of how to get the reports and access the reports. We really have no excuse here in the 21st century for not having the reports available to the public the same day through a website. So I'll just leave it at that, and again, the even-years should not be dismissed so quickly. It can get to a lot of the root of the problems which inspired this, besides postal balloting. Thanks.
Thank you. Brian Olson, and then the last speaker will be Anna Risa.
So, thank you. According to the notes I took, Ventura was expecting to spend $150,000 to count as many as 60,000 votes, but we were expecting to spend $300,000 to count 45, and that's $2.5 per ballot versus 6.6 and 2/3rds dollars per ballot. And it seems like a huge discrepancy, and I want to know, you know, where that, where that cost is, and is part of it from these consultants? How much are we spending on them? Are they really worth it? Or should we hire an extra staff position and do it in-house?
Okay. Thank you, Brian. And we'll get the last speaker, Anna Risa, and then we'll see if we have answers. I hope so.
Good afternoon. I wanted to speak about how voting is one of our most intrinsic duties as, you know, members, citizens of this country and part of this democracy. And for me, I know it gives me a great pride when I go and vote, and it does for my family. And coming from an immigrant family, I think that if we move to a mail-ballot-only election, it doesn't feel the same way. It doesn't feel like fulfilling your duty, it's just like paying another bill. Right? And I don't want it to go to that, not only because I know that cost is an important issue, but at the same time, turnout is the most important for us as well. In working-family communities, it's not a typical thing to go, to do it by mail. I know nobody in my family votes by mail. And I think that an issue of trust is also here, because a lot of those of us who, not me personally, but many of the members of Pueblo, you know, have gone through years of applications and tests in order to become a citizen, you know, to now just, okay, just mail your ballot. It's not the same thing. Maybe people who have taken their democracy, you know, for granted, it's, you know, it's like, no big deal, but for us, it's a little different. And then I also want to talk about, just again, to stress how important it is that we, we put the voter turnout and voter participation civic engagement as the most important priority when it comes to voting. That's all I wanted to say, and also that public financing is an important issue for us as well.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Okay, we had some questions that were asked about why $300,000 versus Ventura's. Mr. Lopez.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I think we need to take a look at that $300,000 in relationship to what it should be compared. Couple of points here. It's $150,000 that the county of Ventura has indicated it would charge the city of San Buenaventura to do that election. So we're talking about the county charging the municipality. Here is a county that is established to conduct elections, that has the equipment, that has the expertise. So what we should be comparing that cost against is the $650,000 that the county is charging us, is projecting to charges. So you've got to compare that 150 to 650,000. Now, coming back on the question, well, if it costs 150,000 over there, I've answered that, it's a structure in place. Well, shouldn't it be that the city of Santa Barbara's cost should be about the same? Well, one would quickly say, well, yeah, it's possible. However, we have to hire consultants. We don't have the equipment, we don't have the expertise, we need that support to get it right. And to get it right, I think we're estimating to be close to $300,000. Our projections are that we will be under that, but it'll be significantly more than if the county of Ventura were doing our own election. If they were doing our election, I would estimate that it would be around $150,000. Unfortunately, that's not the case. And I wanted to add also about the other point that, well, aren't you really saving money if you have, if you don't pay 650, and you only spend 300,000? Doesn't that net you? Well, actually not. As we all know, when we shop, paying more for something than what it's worth is not a savings. It's just simply not paying that amount that is not deserved.
Wow. You mean, I go to those sales, and I don't really have that money that I save? Darn. Okay. Any other, yes, Mr. House, go ahead.
I think that begs a really, I mean, for me, it's a very important question. Maybe we don't resolve this today, but I see at least there's three options. The one would be to move in the election maybe to the even-year. Another would be to do our own elections when it's, when we can. And the other is to challenge this, this grab, or whatever it might be, by the county of, the attempt to charge that much money for our election. Whatever the, whatever the methodology, when something is so askew from what's common practice, one would have to, you know, really wonder what's behind that, what's underneath that? Why would, why would they go to that length to dissuade us from having them conduct the election, when they have all the capability, when they have all the equipment, when they've done this for years and years and years? And I, for one, would be very interested to know to what lengths we would have to go to get them back in line before we head out and do our own election. What's our recourse?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, there's an important, I'm glad you brought this up, because it's not readily apparent. You know, our disagreement with the county about their billing methodology for conducting a consolidated election is, is one thing, but it only relates to a consolidated election, where, under the elections code, the actual statute that allows us to call for a consolidation starts with the phrase, "when two or more entities are conducting election on the same date, within the same territory or parts thereof." And what's happened in the last 10 years, and definitely the last few years, is we've ended up as the last man standing in November... up as the last man standing in November of odd years. And it's my understanding, and this is pretty clear, we've checked this out, that in November of 2007, it will not be a consolidated election. We will not have the legal ability to request the county to conduct the, we can ask them, but we can't require them, trigger that legal requirement under the Elections Code to conduct the election. So, that means that the county can bill us what they think is appropriate. And our legal arguments about past elections and their methodology for consolidated really isn't relevant to November of 2007, potentially November of 2009, where, I'm sure the county would conduct the election for us, but they would charge us what they think is appropriate. And, and I have to add, when, when you look at the numbers, say, from Ventura, County of Ventura, for the City of Ventura, I strongly suspect that the County of Ventura is doing what we believe is appropriate under the government code, and that's only charging for the direct but-for costs. The printing costs, the, if, if they have to set up precincts and ballot, voting places that are unique to the City of Ventura, they're only charging the direct costs, they're not charging overhead. And that sort of explains, I think, would probably explain that number. But the point is that we can, we can resolve our dispute on consolidated elections with the county, and it's not going to answer this question because we're now the last man standing.
And we have no other, I mean, it's like, they, they can make a profit on elections? They, I mean, it's, the county actually is, can be in the business of conducting elections at, for, in a for-profit mode as opposed to an at-cost?
Because, because they're not legally required, and we can't legally require them to conduct that election because it's not consolidated. It's a matter of, well, you either pay what we think is appropriate, or you do it yourself. And that's what brings us here today. And I have to, and there's another point here. My understanding that the City of Santa Barbara went to odd-year November elections in 1979, that was a charter change to go to the odd-year elections out of a concern that we would get buried in state and federal elections in even Novembers. And that's a real concern, and it's, I think we're going to hear that if we, we look at another charter amendment to go to, to even-year elections, that we will end up on page 20 behind the presidential reporting and the senatorial or gubernatorial, congressional, you name it. We, that we wouldn't get the media attention, and that was the motivating factor for the city council to go to odd-year elections in 1979.
Okay. Well, thank you for explaining that with the county. I think not just for myself, but for anybody who's watching or listening, it's very important to understand that. It just seems so, you know, but just because I don't like it doesn't mean much. Okay.
Okay. Could you put back on the screen the options that we have? And Mr. Williams has a question for, get to.
First, I just wanted to put out a plea to Mr. Holland and to election staff and, and to you, our staff, because there must be a way to cooperate for a reasonable price. I mean, it seems to me a, the circumstances that bring us here are a little bit strange, and, and I, I hope that we will find a way to, to come together on this issue. My support of, of a mail-ballot election simply is a question of, of turnout and turnout differential and making sure that that, that increased public participation is something that is borne out across income levels and across cultural levels. I am, to me, there's lots of ways to, to save costs, and not all of them are fair in a democracy. So, you know, to me, I'm not for or against it, but to me, I need a preponderance of evidence to indicate that we have, have the potential to increase and not decrease turnout with mail-ballot elections. Oh, and, and I guess one thing I'm a little bit uncomfortable with, but I, I suppose we're forced into it, is I, I really don't like the trend of outsourcing elections to private companies. And my hope would be that that would be a one-time-only thing and that we would develop the capability within the city clerk's office if we had to choose this path. Again, it is not my preference to choose the path of doing our own elections. It makes absolutely no sense from an objective level if the, if the county and the city were truly participate, or truly cooperating.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have the discussion, yes, go ahead, Ms. Campos.
I do have a couple of responses to your speakers, if you may.
Thank you.
Number one, there was a question about postmarks. When you conduct a mail-ballot elections, postmarks don't count. If your ballot is not received by 7 o'clock, in our case, 8 o'clock, in your case, on Election Day, it simply cannot be counted. And for that purpose, we make sure that in Burbank, our post offices are swept a couple of hours before the close of the election to make sure that we count every single ballot that could conceivably be counted. And secondly, there was a young lady who spoke about her experience with voting, which I can relate to because I also am an immigrant, I am also a naturalized citizen, and to me, the right to vote is truly a sacred right. I would just remind you that casting your ballot in the process of democracy really is what's important, not the system that you use to do it. And when you vote by mail, you have the ability to sit down with, as we do in our home with our family, my children are registered voters, as is my husband, and discuss the ballot. And then we all vote in private and mail our ballots, or deliver them in person, or do whatever we do. It doesn't take away the ability of you to participate in the process and to sort of show your children how important the process is and how important it is for you to cast that ballot. So I just want to make sure that you understand that voting is what's important. Sometimes we get really caught up in the emotion of tradition, and, and I don't really think tradition plays such a critical role when you're talking about something as important as an election or the democratic process. Also, you should know that in Burbank, we do set up polls at City Hall. And if you prefer to vote at a poll, as you always have for the last 40 years, you can vote at the poll and drop your ballot box right, your ballot right into the box there. So we don't take away the ability for you to actually use a poll booth like you're accustomed to using. You just have more days in which to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we have our options, and we certainly, or anything else that you haven't considered here? Yes? Mr. Lopez.
Madam Mayor, council members, this, this option sheet focuses on the cost issue of running the, our own election. The second part of the question then would be, is there a preference to do a poll or a vote, a vote-by-mail election? That's the second piece.
Right. Okay. So it's to the council. What would you like to do? I mean, this is, that's why we're working here. Ms. Falcone.
I'll start off, I guess. It, it's quite clear that we, it, it looks clear enough to me that we're going to have to do our own election this year because the costs that the county is asking are, are well beyond what I think is reasonable. Now, it's my understanding that we have a, I don't know quite what the exact form of it is, but we have asked a judge to weigh in on the methodological confusion that we have. The county thinks it's perfectly okay to charge us for overhead of their, of their permanent staff and their permanent equipment and their permanent stuff that they keep there all the time and the stuff that they do all the time anyway. Just because we are the only people having an election in November, we, that cost is reflective, I believe, of the entire McGill. But a lot of this stuff is a matter of whether or not it's appropriate for the county to charges for their permanent staff time and, and those sorts of things. So I, I believe we have a judge looking at that, and he's gonna, or she's going to answer that question for us. So where we go in the future in '09 may be resolved as a function of the methodology being clarified. Maybe not. But this year, I think we're sort of stuck. And I, and I think what, the cost savings, Mr. Lopez mentioned this, the cost savings is not a savings. It's the money we don't want to spend. So, I mean, that's, you know, we, we are willing to spend 300,000, I guess, and if the county came down to that, we probably would contract with them, but not at that other price. So we're not, we just, we don't want to spend that money. So that's not exactly a savings. One thing about absentee ballots, I'm a permanent absentee, and I've been an absentee for a decade or more. It's true, though, that about 60% of folks, registered voters, request an absentee ballot or a vote-by-mail ballot, but a much smaller percentage of those actually turn them in. There are many, many more, maybe as much as half or 50% more, I don't know, not as more current figures, but, but only about 50% turn those in. So you can't really rely on that number. It's becoming much more popular over the years, but I think, and I know you still have an option to go drop it off somewhere, but I'm not sure that that's really the same. Where was that young lady who spoke? We have a huge duty to get this right. I mean, we're going to do it this year because we have to, but we have this huge duty to make sure that we get this right. And I think that the confusion factor in change is always extremely high, and so we need to take this very slowly. And maybe this year, doing a normal election but ourselves will give us enough of a change and a feel for how this is actually going to work, that we might have a little more clarity down the road as to any other changes that we might want to do. So I, I just think that getting it right for '07 means not going too radical at this point. I mean, let's, look at these charts. It's a daunting task, and although you have professional consultants to do it, it's still, I mean, heaven forbid we screw it up or something goes wrong. That's, that's, this is elections. This is one of the fundamental things that this, this country is, is based on. So I, I share Mr. Barnwell's wet wellies down there. And I know we have to do it this year, but I think just doing it in a traditional way this year, and, and let us get our feet under us, and then let's see if we really need to make any other changes down the road. Those people like myself, who want to vote by mail because of all the things that, that you said, are, are perfectly capable of doing that, and all the people like my husband, who refuses to vote by mail, can go still punch their ballot at the regular sort of place. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just?
Mr. Wannick.
Mention something? It, it's not clear, and it is complex. The, it has, it has become apparent now that we are the only entity in November of odd years holding elections, that we will probably never have another consolidated election. So the litigation that's pending, which incidentally, last week, we got a ruling on a motion that was, it was pretty pro forma, it's a change of venue motion, and by statute, we were entitled to a different neutral venue, if you will. And that case has been sent to Ventura County. And so we're, we are waiting to be assigned to a judge in Ventura County, and it will be decided by a Ventura County judge. That litigation is only going to be retrospective. It's only going to deal with the dispute over what we were charged in 2003 and in 2005. And, and those numbers aren't insignificant, so it's, it's important to get that resolved. But the, as I, as I say, at the point where we're not doing a consolidated election anymore, the county can say, well, we, we're going to charge you what we want to charge you, what we think is appropriate, and you can take it or leave it. So.
Thank you. Mr. House?
Then I'm going to just, I'll just respond to that, and then I'll say what I need to say about, about today, the rest of today's discussion. I think it's unconscionable that someone should play games for the people's right to vote. And I put that firmly in the lap of Mr. Holland and his crew. Just, they, they should hear from us as much as the public to return to a cost-plus basis for elections and do so without having to have their arms twisted. Now, that's just, again, one politician talking here. On the other hand, I think that if we are now in the position to run our own elections, we will learn quite a bit from it. One of the things we'll learn is what the actual costs of running an election and what those are. We may find that we're able to do it even more efficiently than having it outsourced in any way, and we'll learn first from having a, a, an already capable consultant. But I agree firmly that we should do whatever we can then to continue to bring it home if we can do it ourselves and run it well, from learning through our experiences. The question of, of cost is not even nearly as important to me as the, the bigger issue, which is how do you increase participation in elections? And that's been our, our challenge for so long. It would be important to me that in doing that kind of a ballot, this ballot-by-mail approach, or any for that matter, if we're going to do our own elections, that a, that a hefty part of our budget be for education, marketing, and outreach. That our goal remains the same as it has been in the past, but we just really get over the hump with, you know, in terms of, of reaching the public and encouraging them to participate. And perhaps using this change in approach might be a way to bring people in. And the one thing I do want to say about this vote-by-poll or vote-by-mail, it sounds like it can be structured so that the vote-by-mail can have the best of both worlds. And I, I, I think so. I'm not sure. If what I'm hearing is correct, there's enough time for people to consider their ballot and mail in, and then there is also the opportunity to come and vote at a polling station, perhaps City Hall or wherever it would be centrally and appropriately located, but in, over a longer period of time instead of at that one, you know, that one day. So it may actually expand the opportunity for people to participate in the process. So those are my comments, and I would, oh, and then the question about traditional way this year, that would require, I think, for us to then be acquiring or leasing somehow all the equipment? Is that correct? That would be a part of, if we did it with a polling place like we are, have done with all the same polling places, all the same precinct kind of arrangements, we would still, we'd have to arrange to get all that equipment, right? And pay for it.
And hire all those people.
So I, I, I favor the vote-by-mail and making sure that there is the polling opportunity, but, but only if it's associated with a really very strong education, marketing, and outreach component.
Okay. Mr. Horton?
Well, for, for me, it's not clear whether we're talking about a one-time issue to get through this next few months, or whether we're talking about an ongoing concern. And that, if it's, if it is indeed ongoing, then that ties right back into the election reform issues that we've all been talking about. And that, then that relates to trying to democratize the process, make it better, more accessible. It has to do with the use of, of more public television. It has to do with a whole lot of things, which gives people that don't have a lot of money but want to be candidates a, a fair chance at running. So, you know, we're kind of looking at this one upcoming election here today and talking about that, but for me, that's really not where, where it should be. It's, it's really focused on what's the better way for the community to handle this thing, not only just now, but in the future. And, and although I, I am vitally concerned with the finances of it, it really is not maybe the first point for me, but, but the first point is back to the process of making the elections as open and accessible to people and candidates as we can. And so I think that we need to consider this whole process from a macroeconomic viewpoint and not just look at this one little piece of it, which is indeed important, but it's not the whole thing.
Mr. Williams?
I would, I would suggest that, that we should, at least for me, I would express support for B, if the county does nothing. I mean, if the county modifies its position, I would be willing to consider doing something else. Because I just don't think that cities are the best agent for conducting elections. In our desperation, we may have to do it, but the county has the expertise and the staff to do it. It makes no sense for them not to do it. I understand why we may have to. And so I would just sort of, I guess, express tentative support for B or, or support for B unless the county can make a better offer. offer. To me, it's, it's just that, I guess, that, that simple, it comes down to that. I also think that we should look at, at C as an alternative in, in a little bit more detail. And as far as mail ballot elections, I would hate to see us make a decision based on this hearing. I think we're jumping the gun on this. We have not gathered all the information that we need to. If you're going to really compare substantially similar elections, you have to look at things like how much candidates spent on those elections, because how much they spent can affect turnout. You have to look at if there's anything else on the ballot. We have to look at a lot of things, and we have to look at precinct by precinct returns to really be able to conclusively say what the evidence is pointing to. And it would be nice if we had more than one, a sample size of one. Any statistician will tell you, if you rely on an N value of one, that you are not statistically, you are not, you do not have statistically valid evidence. And we're not going to get to a number, an N, that's high enough to be statistically valid, but I would like to be able to have something that has a higher confidence level than a case study of one. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. Well, this is only about the integrity of our democracy in the city of Santa Barbara, that's all.
True.
One clarification I want to make, that came up a couple of times, in that postal-only ballot gives you more days to vote, and I don't think that's accurate. Anyone now, even if you're not a permanent absentee ballot, ballot person, you can go to the clerk's office twenty-nine days before the election and, and do a one-time-only vote. So that's a month there. You can do that today. So I guess I'll start with a question of if it went to a postal-only ballot, we're only talking about four days, right? There, or would someone, once the ballot came out three weeks or twenty-nine days ahead of time, would they be able then to drop it off early? I mean, are we talking the same thing here, or are we only now limited to four days?
I don't know where the four, where the four days came from.
She said four days if they didn't have. The Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
No, you can drop it off at Burbank City Hall, any, the day after you get your ballot.
The day after you get, okay. So there is that, okay. But I, you know, the idea that there's more time to vote under a postal-only, I, I think is a little misleading, because today, any of us could do that, and even if you're not a permanent absentee voter.
That's true. That's why I included that when I spoke to you. Basically, if you're voting absentee, you're already voting by mail. You're doing the same thing.
No, no, no. I'm saying if you're not, if you're not a permanent absentee, but, but it was, it was unclear to me, anyway. The, the idea of having, I mean, this is a very frustrating meeting for me, because it's not like we want to have the city clerk add on this double work, basically. I mean, everyone in the county votes on who the county clerk is. Everyone in the county expect, you know, expects the county clerk to provide services throughout the county. And here we are at a situation where one of the most important things of that office might be taken away from that office because they choose to charge just an exorbitant amount of money. And, and it's not fair to the taxpayers to have to foot the bill for that. So, you know, that, that's very frustrating. Also, the idea of, of adding that kind of responsibility and work to our city clerk's office in time, on top of everything else, when there is another alternative that happens for everyone else in the county, is another thing. And there, there's a still level, there was, part of the presentation included the need to train city staff from, I don't know which departments, to work on elections, who do not have the training expertise per se, I mean, they'll get the training, obviously, but to take them away from essential city services to do this, one and again, we have a county clerk's office that does this on a regular basis. Let's put this in perspective here. So one, one last question also to Mr. Wiley, the, the timing of when this ruling's going to, to come, and then how that relates to what the county could do in terms of charge, what the number they would charge for this November. What are we, are we talking about months from now, weeks from now? What's your estimation?
Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Snyder, I guess, I'm not being clear, and I'll have to maybe be more direct. We could get that ruling next week, and it will not, in my opinion, affect us in the future, in November of odd years, because we will not be doing consolidated elections.
No, I understand that, please.
Okay. The, the, part of what we're arguing is under, that a government code statute, it says that we can only be charged to direct costs. And here's a point here, because now we're the only public entity with odd-year elections, they're all direct costs. So in a, in a way, I almost feel like I've got to explain the county clerk's position. Setting overhead aside for a second, in November of 2007, if the county conducts the election, we're the only one on the ballot, we're the only one as far, at the South Coast, as far as I know, that needs polling places, that needs polling workers, that needs voting machines. They're all going to be direct costs. And we, even our theory of how the government code works is that we need to pay the county for those costs. So that, I hope that clarifies. This ruling's not, I think, going to, going to impact that.
Okay. So, so just to follow up, you think the 550 to 650 number is firm for this year?
No. I, I don't, I, I haven't been party to that. And there's, I guess, another point here, and I have been in some meetings where we've discussed this with the county, and again, it's sort of explaining their position, and there's some logic to it. It's a lot of work for them to gear up for an election every November. And I believe part of what's going on here is they'd like to do that every other year.
Okay.
And that makes sense. And, but, I think, so, when you say, well, maybe we can work it out with the county, maybe we can convince them that they should be gearing up every November, but maybe we can't. It's, it, it makes sense to say, we only have to worry about hiring polling workers and all of this stuff every other year.
Right.
Now, there was another point, now I've forgotten it, but-
No, I, I think I know where you're, I guess, so this is, this would be my, my direction. I think this year, no matter what, we need to ask the voters whether or not they want to go to an even year, and have that discussion, and have the voters let us know what their preference is. Because even putting that on as option C really isn't an option for us. It's for the voters of Santa Barbara to, to tell us what they want. So we need to know even if that is an option. So if it is an option, if they say yes to that and it moves, well then, well, that will have one path. So that still now leads to what to do this November. And, and I agree and understand what, what Mr. Wiley is saying. If by some miracle or something, the county comes back and says, you know what, we could do it for you for three hundred thousand, I would much rather have the county continue to do it, because we'll have that other pending question of whether we move to an even year, which would mean the county would do it in the future. If then the voters say no to an odd-year election, I think we have to then look at the city doing its own elections in the future, if the voters say no to the even years, because we might be put in a bad situation in the future of, of where we are today. And we want to make sure that the city clerk's staff have the ability and opportunity to know how to conduct an election. So, that sounds complicated, but I think, I think I'm making sense there. The other, I guess, concerns I have about the city moving into doing its own election, I agree with other comments made about the use of consultants. I, you know, there was a mention of a consultant. I don't know who that consulting firm is. I don't know how, how that firm was, was picked, what, you know, the qualifications are, that kind of thing. If it's a poll ballot, and if we get to that point, I want to know what the equipment is like. You know, there's been too many concerns of different types of equipment and, and their veracity and how effective they are, or if it's just a paper ballot and how they're scanned. I mean, I think there's a high level of trust with the county equipment here compared to other states and other counties in the state, and we need to match or exceed that level of trust and effectiveness of the type of equipment we would use here in the city. And I, I cannot, I can't answer the question of a, of a postal-only ballot today. I mean, I didn't have any real good information prior to today. I heard today, I listened today, I listened to the public speakers, but I'm going to need to be convinced that this is something that can increase voter turnout before I can say okay to it, especially when every other election in the county is going to be conducted in a different manner. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, just from a public process standpoint, this particular discussion of the council is one of the richest and most in-depth analyses of any topic that we've been involved in a long, long time, and it's, it's not even happening on Tuesday in the normal place. But I, I really appreciate my fellow council members' thought process on it, because it's made me think about some things that I might not have thought of quite before. I, I'm not flat-footedly, but I'm close to flat-footedly opposed to the city of Santa Barbara running elections. So for me, item number C is the most important. I don't want to do this again and again and again in odd or off-years. I understand the difficulties that Mr. Wiley referenced, so it's got to be some kind of sales program to make sure that the public understands it. But it's, has been said before, it's, it's a trust issue, it's a staffing issue, it's, it's a whole bunch of things. In addition to which, I, I want to take the county's side on this just a little bit. At first, I was somewhat like my colleagues, I was a little PO'd that the county's trying to get some of our money, and it didn't seem fair. But they're also keepers of the public treasury, like we are. And so I can understand that if they feel like it's not a consolidated election and they can charge us this full amount, then I understand where they're coming from. I would, it would be very nice if we could have just a kind of elected official to elected official conversation with the county and with Mr. Holland, and see if in this particular election year, they'd be willing to do something like the $300,000 one. I don't know what the actual costs are, so these numbers are just made-up numbers for me. Which brings me to a question. Does the $300,000 number include polling places, or is that the, is that the mail, vote-by-mail cost?
Mr. Lopez?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Barnwell, the, the $300,000 cost is the high end. It's all-inclusive, whether we run a mail, a vote-by-mail, or a poll election. We anticipate that a vote-by-mail could be around seventeen percent cheaper, but it includes all of the costs that are necessary to conduct an election.
Okay. So, it may be an unfair assumption, but it might be reasonable to believe that maybe the county's number is high and their actual number could be down closer to 300,000. I don't know. But I really don't think it advances anything for us to get into a, a face-off with the county on this issue. And today, more than any other day that we've ever discussed this, I think I understand the county's position. And not only do I understand it, but I understand it for what it bodes for us in the future, which causes me to be a number C guy up there, because in the future, we're going to face having to run an off-year election. I, recognizing our current circumstances right now, my first thing is, I'd like to, Mr. Holland, I know Mr. Holland. He's, like I said, he's, he's an elected official, which is another thing. We have a city clerk here, but our city clerk is Mr. Armstrong, and then he delegates the responsibility to the city clerk's staff, but Mr. Armstrong is an elected official. We're the only elected officials here, and there's something sacred about having the city clerk, or the county clerk, excuse me, be an elected person and then run the election. I don't, I don't know if there's more or less graft associated with something like that, but it seems like there's control when you vote somebody into office. And that, I, I like that. And maybe it's a traditional thing, as we just mentioned, and I, you know, I'm, I'm being swayed by tradition, but I don't think so. I like the fact there's an elected official in charge of that, which is another reason why I, I don't want the city to do it. But my first choice would be to go to Mr. Holland and say, listen, we're in a squeeze here, Mr. Holland. Is $300,000 a number that is anything close to what you can run this year's election for, based on what we've looked at in the private marketplace? And if he said yes, that'd be great. And then we get our ducks in a row to eliminate this problem in future years. Falling short of that, I'm, we clearly have to do it. We go ahead and do it. But I don't want to eliminate polling places. I, there's, now, I don't know how many polling places we have to have, if we, but I, I think that's a critical part of what we're doing, and I'm a little, I, I don't want to go to all vote-by-mail either. It was expressed by some of my colleagues, and I'm, I'm a little squirrely about that, just because of the education process, et cetera. And I want to echo, there's nothing more fundamental about government than elections. And I don't like even having this discussion, because it's putting us in a position of changing what has basically been a traditional process since we were formed as a city in 1850. And so it's, goes really against my grain. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We're going to need to make some motions, I believe, or not. But I think we should give some direction to, to the staff. One of them would be whether we would explore shift to even years, maybe by advisory vote, or, or just allow to have it done. What do we do about the November 2007 election? And the third thing, and that is, do we run it ourselves, or do we contract with the county? And then the third thing would be either poll or mail, or do we need more information, and what does that look like? So, Mr. Williams?
I'd just like to make a motion on the poll versus mail, and I make the motion to defer that matter to a future council meeting, pending the best precinct-by-precinct research that we can with, you know, numbers and analysis of other factors affecting turnout.
So your, your goal would be to increase turnout, if you, whichever way, yeah?
Absolutely. I, I think that we need to-
Okay.
Have, as much if not more analysis of that than of the cost analysis, because it's even more important than the cost analysis.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have three seconds, and I'll, a second or two, why not? But, yeah, okay. And I agree with the purpose of that, to increase turnout. Okay. All those in favor of deferring this to another council meeting where we can hear about turnout, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. Now we've got, explore the shift to even years or even do it?
I'd like to move that we explore the shift to even years.
Second.
And how, how though?
I think we're going to have to have Mr. Wiley come back with a staff report on the options on that.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
I think one of the options has to be by advisory vote.
Yeah.
Seeing whether the, the citizens, the voters of Santa Barbara would like to do this is really important to me.
Hopefully, he would include all those.
Yeah, all the options.
Isn't that a charter amendment? An advisor, more than an advisory vote? I mean, we only need advisory votes on things that don't require a charter amendment.
Got it, got it. You're right. Needs a charter amendment.
Do it. We need to do it.
We shouldn't vote on it twice.
Good point. That's right. Okay. So the question, then, then tell me your motion again, sorry. Because it can't be an advisory vote. You're right. It needs to be a, a vote.
Mr. Wiley, what, what would be the appropriate motion?
Well, there, there are different options. You can do anything by an advisory vote. You're just asking for some advice. But if you believe that ultimately you've got to come to this decision, let's just say you do advisory vote in November 2007, that then means the soonest you could have such an amendment on the chart, on the ballot, would be November of 2009. Then you start to transition, which pushes it, then you've got to adjust the terms, and you're well into, I don't know, about ten years, a little under ten years from now.
We're out of here.
You know, you're, be honest with you, that's the complexity. You're, you're talking seven, eight years anyway, even if we're not an advisory, we're an actual amendment in November 2007. Essentially, if you were to do it by an advisory, ask the question in advisory fashion, you add two years to what's going to be a long process anyway.
Right.
So, we can do a report on that. We can actually even sort of draft out how the charter would need to be amended, so that you could look at that. And so I don't want to, all, these are all options, and if your original motion certainly would have cost us to do it.
Well, my preference would be to go ahead and take action to, to shift it. Now, I, I don't know whether that's something you would not advise, but if it's, if it's okay to do that, then that would be what I'd like to do.
Can I, can I help a little bit? Let me, let me just, but, okay, but we're not voting right now to actually shift it. Okay. I just wanted to make that real clear. But, but forget the advisory vote. That was not too smart of me.
Well, I think, I think the intent behind the motion is to direct the city attorney and staff to come back to the council with all options pertaining to a charter amendment regarding option C.
Okay. And that's your motion, Mr. Horton, and we have a second. And that's your motion, Mr. Horton, and we have a second. Any discussion, yes, Ms. Corrigan?
Within that, you'll have to get into the whole complexity of term limits and what that means, and changing the charter on that. So, in effect, if we go forward with this and put it on the ballot as soon as 2007, then a corresponding additional thing on the ballot would also have to do with how you're going to deal with the term limit issue. And that's a complex set of questions as well. Get rid of them, exchange them, then, whatever, you know, so.
Okay. Any other, any questions, Mr. House?
Well, it's so hard for me to want to weigh in on this, because any, almost anything makes it look like you want to see it go this way. I don't think, I, right now, I couldn't possibly, I don't see why it would be, first of all, benefit to us, but on the other side, and it would be only if, and this goes back to this point earlier, only if it were to be shown that we would be increasing voter participation in our local election, and we get people to participate here more because of it. So, for studying it from that perspective, I'm interested in hearing how that turns out. That's a tremendous mountain to climb, when it really is not, I don't know if it's necessary, it just seems like so huge. Anyway, if I were to support this, it wouldn't be because I support the concept, it's that I'm supporting finding out if it would increase voter participation.
Right, no, I'm glad you clarified that, because I see a lot of nods around here. So, thank you. Mr. Williams?
I think we do have statistically valid data that even-numbered elections do have higher voter turnout than odd-year elections. I mean, that's not a universal fact, but nearly. And that's because people are voting for their congress members at the same time, and the president, and so, you know, I know, I know we want to think we're important, but people, people like to come out and vote for president more than they like to come out and vote for city council members.
But, who do they call in the middle of the night?
They call us in the middle of the night.
Forget about the president.
That's right. I'm sure we'll revisit some of the reasons why it got shifted in the first place, which really had to do with focusing in on our local concerns without it all being skewed by big national hoopla and stuff.
And just to clarify, at least where, and I think everyone's here, but certainly where I am, it's not necessarily saying we're for or against actually moving it, it's allowing the voters to make that determination for us. We're not...
That's why you put something on the ballot.
Correct.
I'm not even voting for this if I do to get it on the ballot. I'm interested in knowing way early, this isn't a vote to put it on the ballot, is it?
No, 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 that's what I said.
Yeah, this is a vote to find out if it's even worth doing that.
Right. We'll come back at a regular council meeting, with it agendized. Okay, all those in favor, please...
What's the motion, Madam Mayor?
The motion is to come back, put it on a regular agenda of city council, and show our different options, having to do with shifting the election year to an even year. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, we're good. Okay, now, the $100 million question, no, it is a $300,000 question, of doing our own election in November, I'm focused on November '07, or do we contract with the county? And maybe somebody would like to formulate a nice motion, Mr. Williams?
I'm going to try to formulate a compromise motion, which is to proceed on B...
Conducting our own election.
Conducting our own elections, unless the county can make an equivalent or better offer.
Second.
Maybe they'll have a half-price sale, is that what you're saying? That's good. Okay, any discussion?
Does staff have a concern about the amount of, about the time that we will have to be prepared for an election, if this takes a long time to figure out?
I looked at the beginning date, and it seemed like, we're beginning now, but it seemed like it was April when you really, well, you want to go and see the Burbank elections if we're going to do our own, too. I understand that.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I think if we're able to deal with this, you say if it takes a long time, yes, we have a concern.
Right.
But, if, can we have more time to take the issue to the council, to allow you to deliberate a little bit more? Yes. I think we have at least 30 days when we can get some information to you, and still be able to make the decision. Regardless of what we're doing now, our plans are to proceed with the assumption that we're conducting an election. If we assume to the contrary, we're in trouble.
Yeah.
If we assume we're conducting an election, I think we're in good shape.
That's my concern. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion. Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion was to shift to an even year after consulting, talking to the county to see if we can negotiate.
Even year?
No.
No, it's option B. The motion was to conduct...
To conduct our own election, I'm sorry, you're right. Conduct your own elections, our own elections, but after talking with the county to see if we could get...
Point of clarification?
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Horton?
Do I understand that we don't have to do this, that we could go ahead and negotiate with them and still use the county to do this, rather than gearing up for what might be a one-time expensive? Am I understanding that correctly?
I think you're understanding that.
Yes, and I'm trying to leave, I'm trying to leave room in the motion for that to take place if they can do for $300,000 or less.
Realizing that they don't have to.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers...
Mr. Lopez?
Let me make sure I understand, because what I think I'm hearing you say is that if we can get the same or equivalent deal from the county, the preference is for us to work with the county.
Right.
Okay, I understand that. And I think you also understand that the county doesn't have to do the election.
Right.
At 300, 400, or 500.
That's right.
Or a million. They don't have to do it.
If I could add, at least traditionally, and this is going to be, would be an issue, the county has only provided us with estimates. It's like, we will charge you what it costs us, and we'll figure that out in December after the, or January after the election. That's the way it's always been, and I understand the question here to be, this is a fixed contract, 300,000 or less, and so, that's another issue.
Right. Okay, everybody knows what they're voting on? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very, very good meeting.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, yes, go ahead, Mr. Barnwell.
The discussions with the county, I think they should be with Mr. Holland.
Mm-hmm. I actually have gone in there to talk to him, but it was a while ago. But, I agree, Mr. Holland's the, not the supervisors, he's the one in charge of that.
I don't want to burden you any more than you already have with your job as a mayor, but if you would be so kind as to put together some kind of a group of either yourself or some members of the council, and maybe we can approach Mr. Holland, and possibly even some of the other supervisors, the, excuse me, not other supervisors, supervisors. Okay, because I don't think it's a staff-level thing, I think it's an elected official thing.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And I will do that, and I haven't had too many phone calls in the middle of the night, so I'll be fine to do that. Okay?
Thank you for your last words.
Well, we're ready to adjourn, but I wanted to thank our own staff for this amazing amount of work. Did a really good job, and Cindy and Mr. Lopez should be really commended for that. And thank you, Ms. Campos. I hope we're getting you out soon enough so you can get back. But, thank you so much for sharing the Burbank election.
And Mr. Lopez's tie also.
And I love the tie. I don't like the snake, but I like the tie. Very good, thank you very much.